Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, workshop, and special meeting on Tuesday, October 30th, 2007, at 5:00 p.m., 5:50 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session Item A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087 and Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Economic Development and Real Property. Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Real Property. Executive Session Item C, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Pending Litigation-styled Lamar Texas Limited Partnership versus the City of Brownsville, Texas. Executive Session D, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Emma Novaskas versus Brownsville Public Utilities Board at AL. Executive Session Item E, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Real Property.
Let's have a move we go into executive session?
Second.
Second one, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's coming in December.
Can you see that time next month?
Oh, well.
We're interested, we got a bunch of smart lawyers, you know, they're all brief writing. I don't know what, hey, let's talk about, I don't know what, what you all want to hear that you were told to go up to Houston, we want to give you all an opportunity.
No offense, contest case.
Carruba?
Thank you.
I just want you to know the local boys that want to do it, and if you don't think we're qualified, then you go elsewhere, we look at the roster that we're going to propose.
I don't think they want to get away from the job, because they're going, I think it's kind of still, like, right now, they're here to hire, they're trying to secure.
And that's what John Schmidt says, and maybe never call him, but yeah, and that's where the money's coming from, which is always relevant, isn't it? All right, you don't have to call me back, I just had to hunch you down.
Okay, well, I appreciate you doing that.
Okay. Come on again, I don't, we live.
Okay, um, we got a workshop on Florida de Mayo, ten minutes.
Be less than that, Mayor.
Do you want to get started?
Yeah, go ahead. Nobody wants to listen to you, but I will.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, and so I asked for Mr. Calvert to give you a little presentation on the Florida de Mayo Bridge, a project that's been in our books for many, many years. Um, if I could, um...
Okay, this is, let me point this out, the reason I brought this to the attention of, to maybe start talking about planning for this, is a way to find new revenues for the city. The city builds this bridge, it can have a source of income.
Right, and just to let you know where Florida de Mayo is, Florida de Mayo is really a continuation across US 281.
I'm sorry, Ben, we're just getting here, do you have a lot in it, or can you...
Right behind, I told them to get started, that's fine.
That's fine, I'm just getting started.
Do we have a...
Did you start again, please?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, tonight, I do want to let you know about Florida de Mayo, a project that's been in our planning books for a very long time, and the mayor, Mr. Calvert, asked me to give this brief presentation, just to let you know. Florida de Mayo is right here, really, it's the continuation of Alton Glore Boulevard, and this is US 281. Right now, this is the City of Brownsville, you have three other bridges all in the proximity here, Florida de Mayo will be on the west side.
It's the bigger one.
Um, as you can see, if this bridge gets built, it'll be a corridor onto the expressway, and also onto 281 going west, or to downtown Brownsville.
What's to get away from you?
And this is basically, just to give you a little bit more detail, this is the Colonia Via Nueva, we discussed that in a, in a project not too long ago in this meeting, this is US 281, which is scheduled to be expanded. Uh, this is Florida de Mayo here, and then you have the levee. The history of Florida de Mayo has been part of our transportation plan since 1980, it was first aligned with FM 802, and, and back in the early eighties, a developer by the name of Mr. Bernal, developed the Colonia Galaxia subdivision, and he, at that time, had set aside some land that was vacant as a right-of-way for about between five and eight years, until the alignment changed, and then he went ahead and, and continued building his subdivision, which has been built out today. The alignment changed to, in 1990, and that's because development really changed in both sides, FM 802 was no longer viable to carry heavy truck traffic, homes built, more commercial area was built, the mall was built, so that corridor was no longer viable, also in the Mexican side, development also occurred where the proposed bridge was, was supposed to, to be built. The current status, right now, Cameron County has been working on this project as well, they have purchased about $2 million worth of land for right-of-way, there has been no official discussions with Mexico, both the planning department, here in Brownsville, and the Matamoros Planning Department, have worked together and have developed a land use plan, a binational land use plan, that has the Florida de Mayo Bridge in its current alignment right now, which is Florida de Mayo. Both planning departments are currently working on binational transportation plans right now, such as bus routes, major thoroughfares that connects both the US and Mexico. Florida de Mayo is part of Matamoros' land use plan. On the Mexican side, on the proximity of the Florida de Mayo Bridge, three major industrial parks have been built, the Instituto Tecnológico de Matamoros, a university, is already in place, and major residential development has occurred. It is staff recommendations to continue, first, to focus on the West Rail. The West Rail will alleviate traffic congestion along Alton Glore, with the creation of Morrison Road. The city will hopefully allocate funding for the expansion of US 281, which is scheduled by TechDOT to be expanded in the next two years, but TechDOT will need some right-of-way, especially along Florida de Mayo, for stormwater drainage, and that will be the city's responsibility. So, basically, if we can allocate money for land acquisition for US 281, would actually benefit both projects, both the Florida de Mayo Bridge right-of-way, and also the expansion of 281, which is also needed for this project. Matamoros will be having an election pretty soon of its mayor, the city should work closely with the Matamoros mayor, the new mayor, to make it part of his agenda, that's very crucial. So, that's basically my presentation, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Any questions?
Ben, one quick question, what is the projected outlook, I guess, in terms of project cost, any analysis, Ben?
No, we have not done any of that work.
Point of working on, working with you all on this, Ben?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our regular meeting, please rise.
Please, please.
Flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one indivisible.
Pastor Tomas Carruba, please, I didn't know your name was Carruba. See you, Tom.
It's good, thank you. Jesus, we just thank you, Lord, for today, and God, we just come to you right now, and Godfather, we just ask for the mind of Christ and everything that we need to be done here today. God, we ask for your hand to guide us, to lead us, to direct us, and we thank you for that in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, please be seated, I'd like to welcome everybody, beautiful weather, great day, and now we're here for, to conduct city business. The first thing on the agenda is proclamation, binational conference, would you please read the proclamation? Uh, Ms. Ivette Olvera, is she here, please come forward, congratulations, Ms. Olvera.
Hi. You have one today.
You stand up here, that way the camera can get you, right there, congratulations. City Secretary, would you please read it?
Proclamation of the City of Brownsville, Texas, designating Friday, November 16th, 2007, as Binational Conference Day in the City of Brownsville. Whereas the City of Brownsville is proud to welcome, as keynote speaker, Dr. Jose Agustín Ries Escalante, Professor of Bilingual Education and interim Associate Dean at the University of Texas Pan American, who has a strong commitment to the establishment of dual-language educational programs in our public schools, utilizing the latest research findings, practices, and technology in bilingual education, so that students may understand the society in which they live. And whereas the City of Brownsville is also proud to welcome, as the main speaker at the 14th Annual Binational Conference on Education, Dr. Daniel P. King, Superintendent of Schools for Far San Juan Alamo ISD, who among his many accomplishments, served as President of the South Texas Association of Schools, an association that focuses on issues affecting border districts, minor students, and economically disadvantaged students, and served as a catalyst in the formation of the Coalition of Ten Leadership Organizations to speak with one voice to the state legislature. And whereas the theme of this year's conference is developing higher-order levels of thinking, the conference hosted by the University of Texas at Brownsville and the School of Education seeks to unite educators from Matamoros, Mexico, Brownsville Independent School District, UTB TSC, and the surrounding school districts, in order to find ways to help students of all ages maximize their learning potential, which cognitive development, language acquisition, and mastery of skills can be factors in determining their success. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby proclaim Friday, November 16th, 2007, as Binational Conference Day in our community, and on behalf of all our residents, tender to our honored guests, a most cordial and sincere welcome to our city, and witness whereof, we hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the City of Brownsville to be affixed on this the 30th day of October, 2007, signed by Mayor Pat Almada and City Commissioners.
Congratulations. The next one, Go Apply College, Application Awareness Month.
Mayor, if you don't mind, we'd like to recognize that on November the 17th, at a function.
Please do.
Thank you.
Presentation Employee of the Month.
Charlie? Oh, Mr. Keller.
He's not Employee of the Month.
Oh, he's not, wow.
It's the 11th month of the year, town flies when you're having fun, we're presenting the Employee of the Month for November, Daniel Navarro.
Congratulations, Daniel Feliciane.
Daniel Navarro's been with the city for 24 years, 24 and a half years, actually, he's worked at the Parks Department all his career, and actually, he's, he's assigned Dean Porter Park, as you know, that's one of the jewels of our city, Dean Porter Park, and maintaining the landscaping and the buildings, et cetera, is a challenging job, but Daniel leads a, a good department there, a good crew, done very well, so, we thought we honored him with the Employee of the Month for November. He, in recognition for outstanding services rendered to the City of Brownsville for the month of November, presented on this 30th of October, 2007.
Congratulations.
Gracias. He's working in the hot sun all the time, so I'm sure he's already got a hat, but we're going to give another one. And the pin, and of course, he's eligible for the Employee of the Year Award at our banquet in... Thank you very much, Daniel.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Gracias. Yes, Pito.
Okay, you ready for the Commissioner?
There, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
The Application Awareness Month, Go Apply College.
That's going to be moved to November 17th, they want to present it, they want to present it at an event on that day.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to the public comment period.
Mayor, there are...
Chief Carlos Garcia.
Mayor, Members of City Commission, good evening, first of all, I'm not here to complain about anything, right? I'm here to invite all of you, I'm sure all of you have gotten a letter, to attend our annual auto theft conference that's going to be hosted, or co-hosted by the City of Brownsville and Cameron County Tax Assessor's Office next week, we get started on Sunday, we invite you to the welcoming reception on Monday afternoon at 4 o'clock, we hope to see you there, we've invited the mayor to come and say a couple of words, we're going to have over 200 police officers from throughout the state of Texas, that strictly are involved in the theft, and investigations of auto theft throughout the state of Texas, so, I serve as a board member, appointed by the governor, so it'll be my honor and privilege to host this, this conference, along with Mr. Tony Sayura, and I hope to see all of you there Monday afternoon, and we're going to pass, give out some passes.
Where's this going to be at?
Monday, 4 o'clock, at the Event Center.
Event Center?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, you did a good job, thank you. Okay, that's the only public comment that we have, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to consent items, but before we do that, I would like to take the minutes out and go over them, if that's okay, the City Secretary?
Okay, consent agenda items...
Okay, I have a motion to approve all of them, except the minutes, and then we'll come back to the minutes?
Okay.
If that's the wishes of the...
Consent agenda items A through C, and you are removing the agenda item A outside of that item right now, okay?
Can I have a motion approved?
B through...
B through C.
Also move?
Okay, Commissioner Longoria, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second, Commissioner Camarillo, second, says, all in favor to approve B through C? Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item A.
Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16th, 2007.
Okay, Estella, let me just go over here, um, okay, um... Okay, on page five. You there, City Secretary?
I'm getting there, I'm a little...
Okay, where it says, right before the vote, Mayor Pat Almada, you moved that the city manager, city attorney be authorized to pursue other options from the City of Brownsville, city attorney, to seek a second competent legal counsel specialized in litigation of this nature, I also made the comment that I wanted the PUB attorney to participate, and that was denied, that the minutes reflect that, okay? Um, let me go to, um, page 16.
You're adding on there the language that the PUB, it wasn't added on here, that the PUB attorney was stripped from...
The record, from actually what happened, if you go back in the tape and listen to it.
But I did not include it in that, it does need to include that.
So, you're adding that language?
Yeah, I want her to add whatever's on the tape there, in reference to that, not my language, but what's on the tape.
No, that's fine.
That's the tape.
That's what happened.
Um, it says, on page nine, item 19. Okay, when we're talking about the Brownsville Affordable Housing, Home Ownership, I stated my objections there, the comments are not including the minutes, would you go back and insert them, please? And page 14. Where Commissioner Longoria Jr. moved that the kayak be composed of seven members, instead of 10, with a quorum to consist of four members, there was language there that each, each commissioner and mayor would make an appointment.
Okay.
Okay, would be entitled to one appointment, okay, that's, that's not, the language is not there, okay, I want that inserted, you two.
Okay.
Um, page 16, page 16, uh, almost towards the end.
What item, Mayor?
Same item.
Uh, upon, it was same item, upon motion by Commissioner Charlie Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Edward C. Camarillo, and carried unanimously, Ms. Leanne Greer was appointed to the kayak committee, I abstained on that one, if I recall.
Okay.
And, um, just go back and check the minutes, see if you don't, the tape, will you?
Sure, that's not a problem.
Just make sure it reflects accurately what happened there.
I will, um...
And I believe it's that, that's it, subject to those changes, you know, I move that it be approved.
I will second only on that second one, I clearly remember you stayed quiet, there was no abstention, so, but if she will look back in the minutes and reflect, that's not a problem, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I believe I said, if you, if you follow the tape, Commissioner Atkinson was saying that, you know, I should make my appointment, I said, no, there was no point in me making an appointment, because I don't have a vote in this matter, I made it very clear, if you include those words in the...
Those wording, that's fine.
Okay, that, that shows my abstention, okay, very clearly, okay, let's go to the next item, oh, wait, wait a second, let's call for a vote, I have a second, by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor? Aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries, to approve item A of the consent items, agenda items, okay?
Okay.
Now, let's go to the next item, please.
Item five, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Board of Adjustments.
What is the wishes of the commission?
I think it was Commissioner Camarillo that wanted to appoint someone.
I'm going to reappoint Oscar Garcia Jr.
A second.
As the alternate.
We have a motion to appoint Oscar Garcia by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Sineros, all in favor? Aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item six.
Item six, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Transit Advisory Board.
What is the wishes of the commission?
Well, does Ms. Sylvia Berry and Mr. Mark Matty want to continue to serve?
Yes, they're seeking reappointments.
I'll make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Cisneros, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson.
Who are we reappointing? Uh, Sylvia Berry and Mark Matty, they're the ones that are...
They've been in the advisory committee for the last several years, so, but they were appointed.
They attend the meetings, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item seven.
Item, item seven, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Airport Advisory Board.
Commissioner Garza?
Yes, um, there is a, um...
You just, you don't have to talk about it, just make your point.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Ruben Rodriguez, who is a counselor for BISD, the master's degree, has been with the school district about 27 years.
I'll second it, good man. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously, okay, please try to speak up a little louder for Estella to, to raise your hand, okay, maybe that'd be better, because she needs to record these votes, okay? Okay, item eight.
Item eight, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Mayor, sorry, I'd like to make an appointment.
Yeah, Commissioner Atkinson.
I'd like to appoint Raymond Ojos to Brownsville Public Utilities Board, second that motion.
We have a motion, and a second, I think, before we take, I want to just make one note, I think this is premature, I think it's illegal, but the commission has the authority to make the motion a second, I think it will be decided by the courts whether it's an appropriate and legal appointment, having said that, subject to that, I'll make my vote, one way or the other. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. And should we get an opinion from the, the attorney?
I'd like to make a motion, hold on, hold on.
I want to be sure I have an A's.
Yes.
I have Triony, Camarillo, and Cisneros.
I have, I'm an I, subject to be legal, Raymond Ojos.
Yeah, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to appoint...
Before we, before we do that?
Wait, wait a second, let me recognize, I think Commissioner Sineros, she was speaking first, you want, you want to use your gentleman, okay, Commissioner Atkinson, Triony?
If I may, I'd like to get an opinion from our council, as to the appropriateness of our action at this point.
He doesn't know.
Yeah.
I'll offer what information I have.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mayor, the issue was brought to my attention last week in relation to the, the issue of Chris Valdez's appointment, at that time I began to look at it, the way, at that time I didn't understand that there was going to be a motion to appoint a new PUB board member, but having been asked to analyze that, my understanding of the timeline would be... The way, uh, at that time I didn't understand that there was gonna be a motion to appoint a new P U B board member, but having been asked to analyze that, uh, my understanding of the timeline would be such that, to cut right to the chase, it would be permissible at this point to appoint a new P U B board member. Uh, that's based on an analysis of Commissioner, uh, Arroyo's, the, the seat would have been gunned, in my analysis, uh, with the first full-term appointment for that seat, uh, recently, which was for Sally Arroyo in October of nineteen ninety-nine. She then served until June of oh-three, which was only four more, four months short of the completion of her term of office. At that time, according to my records that I've looked at, Raul Busteto came on board and served that remaining four-month period, and was never reappointed, nor was anyone else appointed, for the following year, at which time Mr. Busteto passed away. And Mayor, at that time you were made a P U B board member in twelve of oh-four. Under my analysis, and I think it's legally correct, is, uh, that Mr. Busteto would have served a year of your term prior to you being appointed. He, he had, we had no way of extending the four-year term of office that Sally Arroyo had originally occupied, but by failing to appoint anyone else, um, that, Mr. Busteto carried over in office, but we couldn't extend the term, so he was carrying over into the next four-year term of office, which would have been a year of the term you served. You then served from, um, from twelve of oh-four through, um, through seven-
Through sixteen, two thousand and seven.
Correct, yes, sir. Uh, and then that, uh, then when, in seven oh-seven, when you took office as mayor and began serving on the P U B board ex officio, then, of course, your position was vacated, uh, at the P U B board, the one you previously held, and at that time Joe, uh, Dr. Joe, uh, Savalleta was appointed, uh-
Let me, let me interrupt you there.
Okay.
The, the appointment, as a courtesy was given to me, as may well remember, and my appointment was a four-year appointment, you're, you're cutting it off because you can, or whatever you wanna do, that's fine, I disagree with your opinion, but that's okay. But my intent, and, and my appointment was for four years, okay? But going.
Mayor, you just voted, you just voted for a replacement, Mayor.
We're talking about July, August, September, October, and October, uh, we're in November, three months.
I believe Mr. Garza had the floor.
Yeah.
We were asking his legal opinion.
Well, I, I-
And I understand your commentary, but-
Gentlemen, first let me, let me ask, let me remind you one thing. I hate to say this, but the people did elect me as mayor.
And they elected each of us city commissioners.
And I preside this meeting, I preside this meeting. Now, we go by the rules of the presiding officer, and I ask you respectfully, okay, to abide by those rules.
I was simply asking Mr. Garza-
You wanna be mayor, you need to run for mayor, okay?
No, I'm very happy being city commissioner, I would simply like to have the opinion of Mr. Garza as the attorney.
Mayor, every position up here is elected position.
Please, speak one at a time, please. Please continue, and then I'm gonna have the, um, another opinion, legal opinion given, okay? Go ahead.
It's my opinion, this, I said, that, Mayor, when you stepped down from your P U B office and took, uh, role as mayor and began serving ex officio in July of oh-seven, that there were only three months remaining in that term of office, as defined by law. And we can't create a new term, that's the turn, that's the amount of time left on that term for Dr. Savalleta to serve. I was not aware of that till I saw the motion to make an appointment, that's my analysis, I believe legally it's correct. I don't know, I will go on to say that whoever is appointed, uh, in my opinion, would be eligible to serve two consecutive four-year terms, because, uh, under my count, Dr. Savalleta only served about a three-month period, so, because of the fact that his tenure of office was less than two years, uh, that would not count as a, as a full term. Therefore, whoever's appointed now, or whenever this commission appoints that vacant place, would be eligible to serve two consecutive four-year terms.
And just to remind my colleagues, at that time when I appointed Dr. Savalleta, uh, the votes were Commissioner Longoria, myself, Commissioner Garza, and Commissioner Atkinson. Uh, abstentions was Commissioner Troyani, Commissioner Sisneros, and Commissioner Camarillo, which in my opinion takes him out of the equation to be discussing as to what the intent was, wasn't the intent of the, of the vote, since the abstain. That's my position, okay?
Well, then me being one of the votes that was for, I want to discuss it, and I wanna bring it up.
Well, that's fine. I, uh, nobody's saying you can't.
No, wait, at this point, I wanna make a motion to appoint-
The equation, the equation changes because you have people that-
I think-
Mr. Mayor, if, if, if Mr. Garza's done, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint.
I already had the motion.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second.
I got the motion.
Are you done? I wanna have a, a legal opinion, the second legal opinion, I mean, I wasn't gonna ask for this, but they opened it up, so I, you're, you're entitled to a legal opinion, and I asked for a legal opinion-
Well, I, I think we have a city attorney, don't we? I mean, Mr. Garza is still the city attorney?
And I'm still, I'm still the mayor, and we're entitled to hear his legal opinion.
Mayor, I have the floor.
I call for Mr. Um, John Schmidt, the P U B attorney, would you please come forward and give your opinion, legal opinion?
I'm gonna-
You know, I would object to John Schmidt giving a-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
May I have the floor, please? Go ahead.
Well, you can have the floor.
If I recall, at a city com, at a P U B board meeting a week ago, you, Mayor, said that any recommendations from the city attorney would not be valid at P U B because he was the city attorney. Therefore, I see it totally irrelevant that the B, the P U B attorney come to the city commission.
I don't recall saying that at all.
Well, I was there.
I don't recall saying that at all.
And I have-
No, in fact, in fact, I, he faxed me his opinion, and we relied on it.
You know what, I have a motion, Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh-
I, I haven't called for a vote, I'm, I'm asking that, uh, John Schmidt, uh, would you please come forward and give the legal opinion? And I ask to, 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 respectfully, listen to the opinion, uh, just hear another opinion.
Is, uh, Mr. Schmidt here for public comment, so that we can, uh, we can ask questions of Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, come on up.
Mayor has ruled, we're gonna have an opinion, or we're gonna recess?
We can recess if you'd like, Mayor.
I don't think you have the votes to recess.
Yes, yes, I don't need the votes, I could call the recess. Uh, would you please go forward with your opinion, and give him the respect and the courtesy to listen to the opinion? Please, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and esteemed members, uh, I'm happy to be here, because after all, uh, my opinions-
If you're speaking into the mic, we can all hear you.
Very good, Mr. Troyani, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and, and, uh, members of the commission, I'm happy to, uh, be here, because after all, we have to remember that the advice that I give out sparks intense litigation, so, uh, that's point number one. Uh, two, I don't necessarily have any prepared remarks to make, but I would like to share, uh, some light and, and hopefully rather, uh, avoid the heat. Uh, I spent some time in, in researching intensely the relationship between the city and the P U B. Now, if you look closely at the intent of the charter, and, uh, the canons of statutory interpretation as a starting point, uh, confirm that it's the intention of a commissioner of board that should be looked at when you're reading the, the city charter. And it seems pretty clear, from the very strong language in the city charter, that the commission, this commission, some, some many years ago, different personalities, but same concerns, concerns for the community, uh, concerns for the independence of P U B, set up an independent agency. And I ask you to look again at that charter, and examine the language, and you'll see that, if I may suggest, this very important business, this, if you will, this cash cow, was set up to serve, uh, the interests of the people, and to be independent, to the extent possible, from the daily tug and pull of political life in South Texas, to which all of us are, are subject. So that its decisions, the decisions of the professionals running that, would only have in mind, uh, business concerns, rather than political concerns, and not only not, not present political concerns, but future political concerns. And so, again, if you look at that language, it's pretty clear a couple of things, P U B is and ought to be very independent. There was a resolution in, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, and, and again, I, I didn't know it was gonna be called on, or, or I would have brought it and passed it out. It's a resolution from the council that states that P U B is responsible for electing its own officer, and, officers, excuse me, and establishing its own rules. That's the express language. Well, what's implied in all that? Implied, I, I respectfully suggest, is the implied power to determine the qualifications of its own members, and to determine P U B's determination for the term of office, term of service, for its own members, independent of the council. Now, I, I hear you, and I don't say that in violation, but-
You know, Mayor, may I have the floor, Mayor?
Please, let, Mayor? Look, Jim Garza was allowed to give his opinion, please allow him to finish, and then you can-
I think he was interrupting a question.
And then you, and then you can talk, okay? Please let him finish.
But I'm, I'm gonna have the floor next-
I'll certainly let you finish, Commissioner, uh, I mean, speak, please.
Well, I, I have not, uh, set up any, any decided, uh, recommendation, other than, "The language of the charter speaks for itself, both in the express language and the implications thereof." Punto. Uh, may I, uh, respond to questions by the commissioners?
Okay, Commissioner, you wanna, you wanna say something? Uh, Commissioner Troyani?
Does Mr. Sisneros have any questions first, or?
No, I'm just, I'm gonna make a motion, and I've been asking for the floor, but I'm gonna go ahead and get-
Mr. Leo expressed intent to, uh, motion.
No, I had done that prior to that.
I recognize him.
I had done that prior to that.
All due respect to you, sir, I, I recognize him. I told him to hold it right there. Now, do you have a question of the attorney?
Nope.
I'll give you all the due respect that you, you deserve, and, and I'll give you, of course, the ability to ask questions. If you don't have any questions, you're dismissed, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Garza, please make your motion.
I respectfully make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Savalleta. He has done a very good job at P U B, I don't see anything negative about him as far as doing his, performing his duties as board member at P U B, so I highly recommend that we reappoint Dr. Joseph Savalleta to the P U B board.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Leo Garza to reappoint Dr. Savalleta, and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Atkinson. I will make my vote against, subject to the legalities that will be just taken care of in court, okay? All in favor to reappoint Dr. Savalleta?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Nay.
Count Cal, I'd like to make a motion.
Do you have it clear, uh, which nays or nays?
I heard two nays. So by you voting-
No, she, she, she heard two nays, okay? Now, you wanna clarify anybody? Please.
Camarillo, okay, Longoria and Sisneros?
Yes.
We just wanna make sure she records it right, that's all.
Now, even though it's pending litigation, you're still voting as a yea to appoint this member to a four-year-
I said, "Subject to the outcome of the litigation." If it's, if it's, if it's, if it's legal, then my vote is good. If it's not legal, it's all moot issue.
You know, Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Arturo Farias.
Arturo Farias. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sisneros, and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye or nay?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Opposed? Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson, how, how was your vote?
I vote yea.
Yea. Okay, so you got?
Mayor, how's your vote?
Pardon me?
Your vote?
I put nay. Do you have the votes clearly, uh?
Yes, I have two nays, Garza and the mayor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Let the record show that Dr. Savalleta, in my opinion, has done a great job for P U B, and I believe he should stay, but you, you have spoken, commissioners.
Okay, we must move on, uh, item number nine.
Item number nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash fourteen eighty, to extend the standby purchase bond agreement between the City of Brownsville and Bank of America for obligations designated as City of Brownsville Texas Utility Systems Subordinate Lean Revenue and Refunding Bonds Series two thousand and two A and two thousand and two B.
Mayor, commissioners, my name's Sandra Arcia, Chief Financial Officer for Brownsville P U B. Uh, this ordinance, uh, will allow us to extend, uh, for a year, a standby purchase agreement with Bank of America. Our current agreement, uh, on these two thousand and two, uh, variable rate bonds expires in January. We, we have received the favorable, uh, premium at eight basis points versus the twenty-six basis points negotiated in oh-four. So, uh, this will, uh, this is the first reading, we are scheduled for November twentieth, uh, uh, second reading, and look forward to your favorable-
What, what exactly are you asking for, to, to get more bonds?
A standby- No, no, what a standby purchase agreement does is, we have, uh, these bonds in a variable rate mode, they remarket every week, and our, when our paying agent, if they don't have enough funding to repurchase the bonds, uh, which, which they've always had since we issued them, this agreement stands behind as a liquidity facility to, to provide the funding on the repurchasing of the bonds, uh... Since the, the initial agreement was established, uh, Bank of America has not had to step in, uh, the paying agent has satisfied all of the purchases, and, and this is just something that's required through the ordinance to satisfy investors, and, and, uh, we, we need to do it.
What happens if we don't extend?
It does expire in January, and we will be, uh, in compli, and not in compliance with the bond covenant.
And then?
Because it, it is a requirement in, in the way we structured and issued the bonds.
Uh, is this linked to, to raising rates?
It is not raising rates, it's a favorable, uh, premium that we've gotten.
Oh, we're gonna be obligated later to raise rates through the extension of these bond agreements?
Uh, not at this time, we're extending it for a year.
We can, though.
We're saving money, we're saving money at this time, because we're going from a, from a premium that's based on point two-six percent of one percent to point zero eight of one percent, eight basis points versus twenty-six basis points. We're saving money, we're going from a quarterly premium of about nine thousand, uh, thirty-one thousand to nine thousand. We are looking for a one-year extension, so that in a year, within the year, we can begin looking at, at, uh, other options to, to do something with these variable rate bonds.
This doesn't have an extension of one year? You can extend it how long?
We, we had, we had options to extend it for three or five years at a much higher premium, but we're working with a financial advisor to, within the next twelve months, see what, how we can restructure these variable rate bonds, uh, to, to make it a little bit more, uh, beneficial for P U B and, and its rates. So we will be back within twelve months with a financing plan on these variable rate bonds, or perhaps extend it, uh, for another year, uh, if we get a favorable, uh, market rate from Bank of America.
Landre, was our financial advisor from Esther O'Hosse able to review this, and do they concur?
They do concur, yes, sir, and, uh, we've worked with, with, in transitioning with, with our new financial advisor as well. Uh, I'm here representing, because we're in a transition, and, and we couldn't have either one here, or at least, you know, because of the agreements that we have in place.
Now, after one year, will the new bond council be attempting to renew these bonds?
We will, we will find, we'll work with our financial advisor to see if there's, uh, some market opportunities to either take them long, because they're in variable rate mode right now, or, or to perhaps see how the market, uh, the, the premium, the insurance market, can, can gain us more, more benefits for a more favorable premium. Uh, we, we are saving money through this action, uh, now. Uh, they, the, the current agreement doesn't expire until January, but we did get some favorable rates now, uh, and they'll, they'll hold until the second reading, uh, on November twentieth.
I'd move to close public hearing.
Action to close public hearing, say it by Commissioner, uh, the motion was made by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros, all in favor to close public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve?
Move to approve by Commissioner Longoria, we have a second by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item ten, please.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash fourteen fifty-two dash B, to amend the code of ordinances, chapter three twenty-eight signs, article two, construction, maintenance, and landscaping specifications, and dealing with related matters.
Before you get started, ready, store, I was asked, uh, that we could table this till the next meeting, if that's okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
I, I think you got the same call I got, I don't know if y'all got a call from, uh, the beautification committee, and they had questions about, uh, they're, they're going through purchases of signs that they've getting for the city, and they just wanna research it, maybe next meeting they can come back in.
If you read your agenda item correctly, all this is specifying is, the, according to the, to the current ordinance that we have in place, we have political signs going all over the place because-
Political?
County-
Well, as a courtesy to the beautification committee, they asked that we table it.
But if that's all it is, and I'll move to approve.
I think the beautification can bring whatever it is that they wanna bring at a certain time, this is particularly-
I'll move to close public hearing.
Okay, so what do you say, the, the, the motion to table dies, for lack of a second?
I'll second that, Mayor. Mr. Gamas, I, I would add, depending if it fails or not-
You're seconding what?
Your, your motion to table.
Table, okay.
Now, Mr. Gamas, I would ask-
Then we do have a motion to table.
If this doesn't pass, that beautification be involved when it comes to any type of sign, sign ordinance, period, because I know it's political science, and it doesn't seem like much of a big deal to them, but whenever they see sign ordinance and beautification and all this, you know, it, it has an interest, and, uh, we need to invite them, bring them to the table.
I wanna correct what I premiered earlier, you said, Assistant Secretary, the motion did not die to table, okay? It's been seconded by Commissioner Camarillo to table, all in favor? Aye. Can I hear the ayes?
Aye.
Okay. Three ayes, four ayes? Motion carries.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Don't raise your hand then, okay? So we have three ayes, okay, all, uh, to table, all against?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. You got the majority here.
Nay.
Okay?
Say nay, Longoria, and who else was it?
Nay.
Atkinson, and Mr. Troyani, your vote is?
A nay.
It was a nay, okay.
I'd rather hear nays, or, instead of just, uh, yes to everything.
Okay, so now we have, uh, a motion to, um... A motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Gamas to make his presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, members of the city commission, this section is only pertaining to political science, which is section, uh, three twenty- This section is only pertaining to political signs, which is section, uh, three twenty-eight. Uh, the only thing we're doing is we're deleting the word temporary and substituting, uh, sixty days prior to any election on political signs.
Any questions?
What did it read before?
Okay, it was, uh, the filing date, which is state or federal. That's the way it was writ. And there's different dates on, on each election. So, to be consistent, that's why we're saying sixty days prior to the election, so that way everybody can know, uh, you know, when to place their signs.
So, after we pass this, because it's not sixty days before, I think this is alluding to a race coming up. Was it in March, or?
Okay, the primary, according to the election administrators, it will be held, the primary, on March the fourth. So, if this passes, sixty days prior to that will be January the fourth. Not on the filing date, which is December the third, which is, uh, five weeks from now.
Mr. Gamas, if this motion does get approved right now, how long will candidates that currently have, um, I would like, at least for the Herald, if, if they would be able to help us with this, how much time would candidates that currently have signs posted without, throughout the city, have to be able to take those signs down? How much time would they be given on behalf of your department, or on behalf of?
If it goes, uh, uh, second and final reading, it probably will start in forty-nine, right after that.
After the second reading.
Correct. Okay.
Well, they're already being called because they have not filed either. So, there, there may be a violation of the filing date issue right now. So, they've already been called about that.
They place, uh, courtesy calls to some of the candidates that they have political signs that they're under city limits. So, some of them are aware of it.
This is a public hearing, we have some comments. Please state your full name, Leland.
My first name is Leland, last name Salinger. I'm a citizen of Brownsville. Honorable Mayor, I'd like to include, have, uh, recommendation to include, uh, some other language in with this, uh, this ordinance, and, and, uh, in addition to this timeframe, the candidate must be, have already applied, and his application be accepted with the Election Commission in order to put up signs. And, uh, that's just the wording I'd like to see put in there, because we have a lot of candidates that aren't even, haven't applied for candidacy yet. And none of them have, because they're, they're only, the, the first date they can apply for this position is, uh, is, uh, December the third, on the Monday after, uh, December second, of course. And that's the first time they can actually apply. Now, when they make an application, they may not be even, uh, it may, it may be incomplete, and they'd be, uh, canceled out for their candidacy. So, if we put some sort of language in there, that they must be, have applied and accepted for candidacy for the office, then they can start putting up their signs, sixty days before.
I agree with you, but wouldn't, at sixty days prior to the election, the candidate would have already been accepted?
And not in this case. I think the election's in March, and they're, they can apply for, uh, the first, uh, day after, uh, the December the second, I believe, what state law reads. Uh, you may have your attorney, uh, looked that up.
In the partisan parties, they'll be accepted on the first of January.
Yes, but they're, they're, uh, they can make an application, and, uh, they can make their application in, uh, by December the second is the first, uh, December, December the second is the date, but that falls on a Sunday this year, so it'll be, uh, December the third. And that's the state law, I believe, and you may have that, uh, researched by your, your city attorney, and he may find that to be true, or it's not. I've done some little research, but it would be nice if we had the people that are actually, have made an application, start putting up signs for their election, sixty days before the election.
If I may, Mayor, um, only to add some backdrop, um, that's what we.
Speaking to Mike, is it?
I'm sorry. When we did the sign ordinance, that's, we were trying to tie it to the date that a person could declare for their candidacy. That made it hard to count, and the way that's in the electric, election code is, it gives you the deadline to, to declare for a candidacy, and then you count backwards thirty days from there. And so, that was, it's difficult to interpret, but that's what the sign ordinance currently says. Is we're trying to tie it to, in other words, people shouldn't be putting up signs if they're not, in fact, eligible to be a candidate for that office. That was our rationale, and that's, that was the pattern we copied from other cities' sign ordinances. And it, I think it makes it a little, and I think what Everisto's trying to do is get a simpler formula, not really change the day count, but just word it in a way that would, um, make it easier to understand. So, um, that's the reason that it's worded the way it is.
That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinger. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Longoria makes a motion to close, second by Commissioner Garza. All in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. You have one nay?
Nay, Mayor.
Okay, we have one nay, uh, Stella. Item eleven.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash two, ten seventy dash E to amend Chapter fifty through sixty-six of the Code of Ordinances by adopting the two thousand and six edition of the International Fire Code as published by the International Code Council Incorporated, regulating and governing the safeguarding of life and property from handling and use, and the use of hazardous substances, materials, and devices, and from conditions hazardous to life or property in the occupancy of buildings and premises in the City of Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, we're here before you asking permission to upgrade our fire codes to the two thousand and sixth edition. Uh, currently, the last time we updated them was in September of two thousand and five. We're currently working under the two thousand and three fire codes. This is, uh, contract-driven. We're getting, uh, new floor plants and stuff with the new two thousand and six codes. That's one of the reasons that, uh, we're asking for this upgrade. You'll notice that the two major changes are in your packet. One of them is that any new occupancy in the Class A occupancy, having occupancy load of a hundred or more will be, have to be sprinkled now. And that's due to a fire that happened in the February twentieth of two thousand and three at a nightclub in Rhode Island.
Is this a sprinkler issue all over again?
Uh, it's a small, it's a, we already have the sprinkler issue done with the two thousand and threes. The only thing it adds is now, any building that has occupancy load of a hundred or more, new buildings, or future renovations of a hundred fifty percent or more.
So, some.
Are required.
Somebody renovates, it won't apply?
If he renovates less than fifty percent, it won't apply. If he renovates more than fifty percent, it will apply. It's a life safety issue more than anything else, sir.
Yeah, I know, 'cause you, you remember during that impact fee issue, a lot of developers were mad because they had to get sprinklers, systems.
Apartments and stuff, yes.
And it, and it cost them a lot on connection fees and waters, and, uh, this, so this is for a hundred or more people?
In, in a nightclub, or that, the types of occupants you have in your packet. If you want me to name one, I'll name one for you. Motion picture theaters, symphonies, symphony concert halls, television, radio stations, theaters, banquet halls, nightclubs, restaurants, taverns, and bars, uh, amusement arcades, art galleries, bowling alleys, stuff like that. A lot of them already comply, to be honest with you.
I go by places where, obviously, they're violating the fire code just by capacity all the time. I don't see no enforcement.
You'll see, sir, if we get a call, we'll, we'll send a fire inspector in there to, to enforce it. We don't get calls sometimes.
You did it at our church, you know, and we.
We did.
We had to comply. And I have seen the chief and staff out at.
You had to kick people out from worshiping God, or what?
No, but it's, it's, it's a safety issue where you have over a hundred people congregated, and whether it be church or not, there was a fire at Holy Family a couple of years ago. You know, would it happen if there wasn't something in there in place? You know, so, and I have seen Chief Lenny Perez and David Inohosa and other staff out doing, when I've played at certain places of entertainment, where they have been there doing their inspection. So, they are doing their job.
And the overall concept of our job as firefighters, it helps protect my firefighters also, because most fires that we go to, they're sprinkler. It makes it a lot easier for our firefighters to get in there and do the job quicker and safer.
Motion to close, uh?
This is a public hearing. Motion by Commissioner.
I'm moving to approve.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. This is an action item.
Move to approve, second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner Tryani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item twelve.
Item twelve, consideration in action authorizing the city manager to undertake settlement negotiations in the case styled Lamar Texas Limited Partnership versus the City of Brownsville, Texas.
I move to approve, based on we discussed in executive session, to let, uh, city manager.
And the city attorney.
City attorney move forward in negotiations.
Second.
Commissioner Atkinson makes a motion, second by Commissioner Tryani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration in action regarding litigation styled Emmanuel Vasquez versus Brownsville Public Utilities Board et al.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, I ask that this item be placed on the agenda tonight because it, um, again, points to the, I guess, delicate balance in relationship between the city and its utility company. Uh, I, for the most part, concur with Mr. Schmidt's, um, understanding that P U B, uh, Mayor, as you know, since you sit there, ex officio, is, for the most part, fully empowered to operate independently the city. Uh, it was, in fact, set up to, to, to operate that way, and it does. Um, however, I think that it's important for us to acknowledge, uh, in light of litigation and the problems that the District Court alluded to in the order that we were given, that this, uh, body as elected official still does retain ultimate, uh, oversight responsibility. And in our bond covenants, which we're permitted to enter into, and which have to be approved by this board, this commission, before P U B can enter into them, it acknowledges that if, for any reason, the P U B Board is unable or unwilling to operate the system and to provide for repayment of all the bond debts and so forth, then at that point, the City Commission, not the bondholders, become ultimately responsible for operating the utility. And I'm not suggesting we're at that point, or that this board, this commission, rather, needs to take any type of oversight action, but.
I think that's what they're doing, and I think they're injecting themselves into the, uh, operations of the board, and I think you're injecting yourself into the legal arena and mixing the legal and the political.
I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be any different.
So noted, so noted. I think, uh, this changes from the opinion you gave earlier, but, uh, go for, go.
I don't think this would be any different from the action that you took three years ago as a board member.
Well, Mayor, I'm here as city attorney because I feel that I bear a certain amount of legal responsibility to the community, uh, in my role for the oversight of this, uh, of the board as well. And while I don't represent them directly, and am not presuming to, I am here to tell this body of elected officials that if problems arise there that the P U B Board is unable to resolve, then it will fall upon us, and in my role as your legal advisor, me, to find a way to operate the utility in such a way as to comply with all our existing covenants and, and ordinances that we're, that are in place.
What are you asking for?
I think we're, I think we're chartering dangerous waters here. We're in litigation, and I think we're going, uh, make it worse here, but, um, so noted, uh, I don't have the votes, but that's okay.
Let me, let me ask you something. If, if, if a judge put an injunction, is this something we should be voting on until after she discovers what's going on?
I think it's something that is a public record, that this body needs to have public notice of, that it has happened.
Wait a minute.
Uh, it may not be.
Isn't that for a judge to decide right now? Because.
The judge has to.
It's in district court right now, or?
She issued a temporary restraining order based on the facts that Eddie Trevino, the former mayor, relayed to her. That doesn't make it so, it doesn't make it true. It's gotta be heard. We didn't get no notice of any hearing. The judge just took it for granted that what he was stating to be true. Now, we have, uh, a process that we must all abide by, and the process will decide who is right and who is wrong.
That's correct.
And I agree with Commissioner, uh, Atkinson. We shouldn't be venturing into the legal realm, uh, because that's what the process is for.
I just wanna make sure you mean you put on regarding litigation. But what exactly are you asking for?
Acknowledgement that this commission bears ultimate legal responsibility for what is already an existing court order.
That's gonna give. That's gonna give ex-Mayor Eddie Trevino a right to sue the city.
I've not spoken to him about that.
Well, that's where it's coming from.
I don't think that.
The guy ran for, he didn't wanna run again, and now he's back.
Hey, Mayor, um.
Doesn't matter.
Commissioner, Mayor, look, I was at that P U B meeting, and it was one of the most embarrassing meetings I've ever seen, Mayor, the way you all handled the, the, the meeting there with Mr. Manny Vasquez. He was, he had all his family there, was about to get sworn in. I mean, um, I have a real big problem with, you know, you keep talking politics, Mayor, and that whole meeting, what I saw you and the other, uh, board members do, is all political.
Well, if I may, I'm, my points are not.
And don't get me wrong.
About that letter, he brought up a letter.
I agree with you. I agree with you, that was embarrassing, it's wrong.
It was wrong, and.
But isn't this political?
They brought up a letter that you had given him, and they interpreted it a certain way without you being there. Could you clarify that for me, Jim?
At the time I gave him the, the letter, I had not spoken to him, and I think that they attempted to interpret what I meant by the letter. I don't think that I was speaking to the issues that went on to be decided that night. Uh, only because I just had a short time to draft the memo, and I was trying to respond to kind of a last-minute request. But after further analysis, I gave you my opinion about the term of P U B officers, and when they begin and when they end. And I don't think I misstated anything in the memorandum, but I don't think I included the analysis that I've now had time to make.
And let me just.
So, I don't, I'm not suggesting it wasn't this interpreted, but I am suggesting that to the extent that this commission feels like there is some type of oversight responsibility required, if at all, then.
What happens when the.
Were permitted to ask for, uh, a full audit of any of the operations? That's a, that's a, in essence, non-delegable legal responsibility, which this commission has always had.
What you're saying, then.
And we've asked for things and not received them, is that correct, Mr. Kabler?
I'm sorry.
We've asked for things and not received them from P U B, is that correct?
Pete Gonzalez?
I would say yes.
Pete?
They have a, they have a duty to provide us.
I'm, I'm not, wait a second, I'm not aware of anything of that, but, uh, what you're saying, what you're saying.
Mayor, you are, you are, because we asked for that.
No, I'm not aware that they, that the P U B, P U B denied you all.
Can you come over there?
It's something. But let, let me, let me say this, uh, uh, Jim Goza. And this is what you're saying, today we have a majority that thinks this way politically. So, it can inject itself on the P U B Board, control it for its, whatever purpose, okay? Tomorrow, the majority changes, then that commission go in there and interpret it any way it wants, and control it the way it sees fit. It can begin in terms at whim. You know, so, I mean, I think these are dangerous waters we're treading in. And I think you're getting into the district court's room. I think you should, we should stay away from this.
I'd like to finish.
Mayor, let me tell you something.
I think we should stay away from this.
Mayor, you keep talking about controlling...
Because what's happened, let me finish, first of all, let me finish, I'll recognize you, Commissioner. I still conduct these meetings, and you learn to do that, okay? You will be respected, and I will recognize you when it's, when I'm finished speaking, okay?
Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you giving me that courtesy.
You may have the floor, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm glad you agree. Now, based on that, Mr. Goza, the court hasn't decided yet, it has not decided yet.
The court order in effect currently.
It's a temporary restraining order.
That's right.
It's a temporary restraining order.
What I'm asking, I don't want to run on... It's getting into mixing the politics with the legal, because what Mayor Trevino has done, where he's injected himself into the politics... Wait a second, let me say, okay, used the courts, manipulated the courts to gain a political advantage. That has to be decided yet, if it's legal, okay? To gain a political advantage, to prevent us from making decisions. Normally, I'm not going to the court's thinking or anything like that, but the process should be followed, it will be taken up in court. I say stay away from this, from making any decisions till the court looks through all this.
Mayor...
Now, I will recognize Commissioner Sisneros.
Mayor, I have a problem, because you always keep saying about that whoever's in power should be controlling, it should not be, nobody should be controlling anybody. It should be day-to-day business operations, and we should be moving Brownsville forward, and we should be moving P U B forward. And it should be about the greater picture, about Brownsville and its people.
You're very hypocritical, I mean, by my own point, you're very hypocritical.
And you criticize them during your campaign for voting at P U B, and you voted every time you're there, mayor.
Commissioner.
So what's different?
I'm sorry, I think what I've tried to present has led to discussions outside of my only point, which is simply that not that this commission has the opportunity to go in there and meddle with a utility, I'm saying that it has the ultimate legal responsibility for the operation of the utility. Whether they choose to exercise any further authority...
They can inject themselves anytime they want.
I'll ask you one more time.
They have the legal authority to do that.
I'll ask you one more time, because I still don't, I don't mind voting on anything, but tell me what we're voting on. And if we vote on something, are we superseding what they're deciding in district court? I don't want to be responsible for that.
Oh, no.
That's why I want, I need clarification, what are we voting on?
Whatever, if anything, you feel is necessary.
Hold on, you put it on the agenda to do what?
Whatever we feel like doing, that's pretty broad.
Well, let me put it this way, you're responsible for what happens over there, if you choose to do nothing, that's okay too.
The question I have is, the concern over there was what the term of office was, correct?
That's right.
And based on your legal analysis, it is, the term starts from the date of appointment, is that correct?
That's mine and the court's analysis at this point, yes.
And that is supported by Texas Supreme Court and Attorney General opinions, correct?
Along with the Constitution.
Okay, and so the concern over at P U B was whether or not a term had ended and whether or not a new term had started, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, based on your legal analysis, was Mr. Vasquez to be impaneled on that day?
Yes, he was.
Thank you.
So what are you asking us to do again?
I'm not here to ask you to do anything, I'm here to acknowledge that we have the ultimate oversight.
You put an action item here, it's not a discussion.
I don't get to vote, I don't get to make motions, I don't get to vote on what's required by the commission.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Longo.
I just want to know what you all want.
Commissioner Longo, you have the floor, go ahead.
From my understanding, what you're bringing forward with this action item is that, according to interpretation, because of this T R O, at whatever time should the P U B board not be able to function in its official capacity because of pending litigation, this governing body, us seven as a governing body, will take or conduct the business of the P U B until such T R O is decided upon.
If they're able to function...
Go for it, go for it, I would love to see you go for it, go for it, Commissioner.
What is your response?
If the, if the P U B board, the P U B board can't meet until the new board...
Well, it falls back to us anyway, doesn't it?
Ultimately legally, the responsibility lies here. If the P U B board can admit, the court order says that the new board member has to come on board. I think after that, the P U B board can meet, and the city wouldn't need to take any further action. They would be in compliance with the existing court order, I'm assuming that's gonna happen. If for some reason that doesn't happen, this commission, as are the elected officials, has the non-delegable legal responsibility for the operation of the utility, period, that's all I'm saying. If at this time you feel like you're entitled to, as you are under the charter, to examine the books, or to conduct an audit, or to study the operation, or what's been done over there administratively or fiscally, you have that authority to do that. Maybe you don't need to exercise that authority at this point, it's my job to tell you that that's a non-delegable responsibility at some point. We're not there yet.
So I'm motion to acknowledge oversight responsibility on behalf of this...
Before you do that, I want to know when, according to you, Chris, while this is, term expired.
Four years.
Give me a date.
Four years from the date of his appointment, which from memory would be October seventh.
Okay, and I want to note this, Chris was appointed October seventh.
That's right.
And he took office November tenth.
Second or tenth, I'm not sure.
Tenth, okay.
Okay.
And Commissioner Lackner continued to operate as a board member after his appointment, okay? Okay, through the month of October. Our position is that Chris could not take possession of his seat till the expiration of Commissioner Lackner's. That's why Commissioner Lackner continued to function, okay? So what you're doing here, playing politics, I think, Jim, you shortened his term, okay?
I've extended the term with this replacement.
With the blessings of this commission, because the same thing applies to Dr. Z, and I need to insert this in the record, make sure you get it in there. If you go, if we go, if we do the genealogy of the P U B appointments, you're gonna find a lot of irregularities. And you're trying to correct all those irregular, that you perceive to be irregularities with Chris and the other appointment, okay, Dr. Savalletta.
I'm not, I'm not...
No, no, yes you are, yes you are, let me tell you. Sally was appointed October nineteen ninety-nine. Her term would have expired October two thousand and three. She went and got elected, and before her term expired, Mr. B was appointed in July two thousand and three.
That's correct.
July, August, September, October, so that would have meant Mr. B had a three-month tenure on Sally's appointment, original appointment, okay?
Three months remaining on her term.
On her term, three months remaining.
That's right.
Nothing was done.
That's right.
He died November two thousand and four.
That's correct.
Which gave him a year and months.
That's right.
There's office, okay? Because we strongly believe he had a four-year appointment, because the appointment ended when, 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 the tenure ended, the tenure ended when Sally Arroyo got elected, just like I did when I got elected, okay? But wait a second, let's just say this, for argument's sake, he died November two thousand and four, so he was there over a year. I came in in December seventh, two thousand and four, and I got elected December sixteenth, two thousand and seven.
That's correct.
And Dr. Savalletta was appointed July two thousand and seven, so if you add all those dates in chronology, there's no such thing as, the way you're trying to make it fit, it doesn't fit.
Mayor, I can graph it out for you. You're correct that Mr. Basetto...
Can I bring a graph?
Mr. Basetto served three months, then he carried over in office for an additional year. You can't extend the four-year term of office, that's constitutional, it's defined by law. The term of office expired in ten of oh-three. You're right that Mr. Basetto was only appointed three months before that, and then no one took further action, it did get missed, apparently. He held over into the next guy, into your term, he served a year of your upcoming term, because you cannot extend the previous term beyond four years, that's in the Constitution. His term actually ended on ten of oh-three, but his tenure continued until he passed away a year later, because the city did not replace him, and that's my point, the city has an obligation to replace board members when their terms expire. If they don't, the previous member holds over in office.
Let me say something, I know Manny Vasquez. He doesn't work like this in the fact where he wants to sue the city. You know, this is, this is, this is political from former mayor Eddie Trevino, and he's just causing more problems between all of us, for what?
I've never spoken to either one of them.
Because I know Manny Vasquez, he's a quiet individual, he's a good man.
Or, you know what?
Hold on, real quick, he was embarrassed, and I feel for him, because he's a great man, but we don't need to escalate this stuff even more politically, because, you know, he's not, he doesn't work like that.
In my opinion, Mr. Trevino is just standing up for what is right.
I've not spoken to him.
Shit around for mayor again. Okay, it's fine, everybody's in touch.
May I have the floor real quick?
Now, Jim Goza, I want to thank you for taking the time and giving us your opinion, we don't all have to agree with it. We have a commission here that will make a decision whether we agree with it or not, that's it, okay? We have another attorney here, there's no point, I think, in even calling to give your opinion, because, I mean, the commission's already made up its mind.
Call the P U B attorney now?
I think it's gonna be up to the state or district, federal courts to decide all this. I believe, and I reiterate, I strongly believe that the politics was used to manipulate the court to gain political gain, okay? And that's what the court's gonna have to decide, either state or federal, okay?
May I have the floor?
Your reason in the court's not, mayor, and I don't think that's the right comment.
Unfortunately, the politics sometimes gets that way, but anyway, let's go, get beyond this.
Mr. Mayor.
What is it we're gonna vote on, what's, wait?
Well, actually, I'd like to ask a question before we're done here.
What do you mean?
I'd ask, I'd like to ask a question.
Please do.
Okay, you indicated earlier that we can obtain information from P U B. I'd asked Mr. Kabler earlier if we'd been denied information from P U B. I'd like to see the books, I'd like to see the information that we asked for regarding pricing that was mentioned by Mr. Atkinson. That information was never provided to us, I believe Mr. Kabler's indicated that he requested it, and he was told that they were not going to provide that information to him. These are things that, if we are ultimately liable for the actions of P U B, that we need to be able to review upon request, and if we're asking for information, then we should receive it, and at this point, if we're going to have an action item, I would like to move that we obtain the books, and we'd have the pricing information, and...
Commissioner, Mr. Leandro Garcia from P U B.
Wait a second, wait a second, he's got a motion, let him finish his motion.
Okay, that we get the books, and that we get the pricing information that we'd requested previously, and then I'd also like to get, and I believe you've already provided the dates for the appointments for these different board members, correct?
Those are the records that we have here at the city.
And the city's the custodian of records for those documents, correct?
For the oath of office.
We haven't seen those records, okay, wait a second, he's making, he's made a motion, but could you be specific on the pricing?
Well, we had previously, we had previously asked for information regarding the municipal versus the commercial rate, and I believe that was...
Oh, okay, well, I can explain that to you.
I would like it from P U B, I would like it from P U B.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second.
I'd like it in writing.
Wait a second, you asked for that, and you're getting it, because there's a study being done to give it to you.
Well, then we should have been informed, why is there a study being done for information that's readily available?
Oh, because we did provide, we did provide those numbers, we did provide those numbers.
Mr. Kabler, were those numbers provided?
Yes, we did provide those numbers, but we'll get that...
What do you mean we, mayor, so in other words, earlier you said you didn't know about it.
I'd like to see it.
Earlier you said you didn't know about it, now you're saying that we are providing it.
The records are there, the pricing was given to the city, I know that for a fact, and they're based on nineteen ninety-nine, okay? Now, we at the last board meeting authorized to do a new rate study to bring it up to date, okay? And if anybody saw you, saw the video, you would have heard me say, look, the price is gonna have to go up, because since nineteen ninety-nine, everything has gone up, so the true cost of service is gonna go up, but we need a study to do it, and I think we authorized up to twenty-five thousand dollars to do that study to get you those numbers. But the current numbers, they were provided to the city.
Let me ask you something, where are we going? This is about Emmanuel Vasquez.
This is just macro management, man, that's all.
What I want to know for the last time, please, for the love of God.
You've been micromanaging...
You put this on the agenda, what do you want us to vote on?
Whether or not, I don't think that the pricing and so forth has anything to do with the current...
No, no.
However, I think that...
And I want to apologize to Manny Vasquez at home, because I know he's watching this, I'm sorry that his name is being thrown in here for political reasons by mayor, ex-mayor Eddie Trevino, I think that's very wrong, because Manny doesn't deserve this, he doesn't deserve... I acknowledge that he's a board, a P U B board member.
I think Mr. Robinson is choosing to do what's right as well.
No, no.
He's not being forced to do anything, you know?
Can I speak?
Okay.
What do you want, tell me?
Mr. Goza, I have a question, item number thirteen, is it your position, you're asking us to acknowledge oversight responsibility of P U B? Is that what you're asking?
And if the commission further desires to look, not necess, the other things you're talking about, pricing and so forth, you're entitled to under the charter.
What are you asking for?
Allow me to say so.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge oversight responsibility.
Commissioner Troyani made a motion.
If you'd like me to include that, then I'd, okay, in the motion that I was preparing, we will acknowledge oversight responsibility.
Stella, make sure you write this down, I just want to know what we're doing.
Make sure we get this right.
We will acknowledge oversight responsibility, we'd like to obtain copies of the books, and we'd like the pricing information that we'd previously requested, and that would be the essence of our motion at this point.
Let me ask you something, are we legally, I mean, are we, is it legal for us to take over P U B right here?
No, what are you saying? We're not taking over P U B, we're acknowledging responsibility.
I think what's happening here, you're sending a very bad shockwave to New York and the bondholders here.
No, I think that was...
You're sending a very bad shockwave. If a commissioner can't do his homework and request information from P U B, and comes up here and goes into grandstand and say that the P U B did not provide that information, that's totally misleading.
Mayor, you go over there and tell them not to give that information.
I tell you, we provided that information.
I think I'm looking at the king of grandstanding.
And the books are open, you can always ask, if you do want to do your research as commissioner, you're welcome to go there and do it. To grandstand, that's not right.
You go over there and you tell them not to give us information.
We have a budget, it's available, it's publicized.
Mayor, you go over there and you tell them not to give us information.
That's not true, that is not true.
That's exactly the information that we've received.
Yeah, it's a false, that's, in fact, that's a lie.
The information that we returned to the...
In fact, let me tell you this, very simply, you're a liar, you're a freaking liar.
So are you.
No, mayor.
Let's be more professional, please, let's be more professional. Can you please, can we just please, let's get, I have, what is your intent of item thirteen?
To advise the commission of the litigation, to advise, you have the right to ask any additional information you might like. There were allegations of violations of the Open Meetings Act, if you want minutes, if you want anything to do with appointments, or the oaths of office, or anything that the P U B would have records on, then in addition to the things you're already entitled to, which Commissioner Troyani referred to, you would also be entitled to ask for, I don't know, in your position as a commissioner, as oversight authority, if you feel like those are necessary or not, my role as city attorney is to advise you that if you are concerned, and you do want to take a look at those, you're entitled to them. Meanwhile, we'll wait for the court to decide what it does.
Jim, let me tell you the irony about all this, this is how up to date you are in my commission is. The rate is established by ordinance, you have, you have that in the ordinance. You have the rate, no, what he's requesting, we already have, we have.
I don't know about that.
You have it, it's in the ordinance created by this city, that's the rate since nineteen ninety-nine. That's a problem, people come up here, and they're trying to make allegations, and this is sending bad shockwaves to New York, I'm telling you. When, if you did your research, and if this commission did your research, in a way it's supposed to, as responsible commissioners, instead of coming up here grandstanding, this wouldn't get to New York, it's gonna get to New York, and this is not good. Now, the rates are in the ordinance, look it up, everything is published, the budget is published, you need the information, you can get it. Nobody's gonna deny you that information, I'm certainly not gonna deny you that information.
Mayor, I would respectfully ask you to refer to this city commission as the people's city commission, not your city commission, please.
Okay, and I have, there's a pending motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that, mayor.
Okay, what's the motion again?
Previously, it was for us to acknowledge oversight of P U B.
Just acknowledge oversight.
Acknowledge oversight.
Responsibility.
You're not taking P U B over.
Who do you want to take control?
Nobody wants to take over P U B, I think that's already been tried, and...
I ask you to just let it go, let it ride, get your information without going through this, you can get it without going through this.
You get the information.
If you insist on that, okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Sisneros.
He never finished his, what are you saying?
Well, previously...
My motion...
I understood the motion very clearly.
We need to finish, we need to finish the motion with, from Mr. Troyani, please.
I made the motion to acknowledge oversight responsibility, and then he's adding to my motion.
Now, that...
Don't we do that anymore? No, 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 he has a motion, Commissioner Troyani made a motion, not yours, Commissioner Garza, his has precedence. His has precedence unless he yields to yours.
That's right.
At this point, we're gonna acknowledge oversight of P U B, as our, it's our responsibility.
Just let him make the motion.
And at that point, that's it, we acknowledge oversight at this point.
I second it.
Oversight?
It was seconded already by Commissioner Camarillo.
I'll second it, how about Commissioner Garza, no say so?
No, you do, but I'm just saying that originally...
Well, let's get the record straight. Okay, I initially made the motion, I initially made the motion to acknowledge oversight responsibility, and that's it.
Okay, let me point out that this is already given by city charter, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain because it's already done by city charter, there's no point in me voting, thank you. Anybody against, anybody against?
That information that we...
Anybody against? Okay, motion carries with one nay, abstention, I'm sorry, abstention, thank you. And put in the record there, Stella, that I stated, based on the fact that oversight's already granted by the city charter.
And I apologize...
And just for the record, obviously, there's been some confusion as to what our authority is and should be as a legislative body. We can put that in the record.
Defined by city charter, okay, let's go to the next to the, next item, please.
Item fourteen, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero fifty-nine to authorize city staff to pursue a new corporation application, membership, or charter with the Boys and Girls Club of America.
This is something good and positive.
No, Charlie, no.
It's not good, I don't think anybody can turn this into a negative.
I'm playing around, man.
Please go ahead, city manager, hopefully not, anyway.
On September eighteenth, two thousand and seven, the Boys and Girls Club charter in Brownsville was unfortunately removed, so the city does not have a Boys and Girls Club charter. The resolution that you have before you is for you to consider and sign, and so we can submit on behalf of the city to get our city chartered for a Boys and Girls Club with the charter being under the umbrella of the city in relation to financial situations, purchasing issues, and under the realm of our Parks Department. That's the essence of the...
I approve that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I'll oppose, motion carries unanimously, next item, please.
Item fifteen, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero sixty to authorize the submission of funding applications to Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for quality of life projects for fiscal year two thousand and eight.
Members of the city commission and mayor.
State your name, please.
I'm Chris Patterson, the Parks and Recreation Manager of the city of Brownsville.
Thank you.
As you can see, we submitted, we're going to submit applications to the B C I C board in reference to three projects that they'd like to undertake, and one is the renovation of the Morningside Park restroom and concession stand complex, the air conditioning units of the Gonzalez and Olivetta Park gymnasiums, and the other one is Parks Equipment and Vehicles. And as a formality, we generally put this in as a resolution, it's part of the packet, it'll go to the B C I C commissioners, and therefore we'll get asked some detailed questions there. I approve it, please.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Longo, a second by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I'll oppose, motion carries unanimously.
One more thing, Skip, one more, I mean, Patterson, Chris, I've been getting a lot of complaints about the restrooms at Olivetta Park. Can you make sure some of those boys and directors have keys? Can you make sure some of those boys and directors have keys to the restroom? Because sometimes there's a lot of little kids, they can't get into that restroom, it's locked.
We've, uh-
Did you take care of that problem already?
I did, so we did.
I apologize.
I had some encouragement, and, uh, I took care of it real quick, so.
Okay, those things we can take care of directly with any director, instead of bringing it out here. Okay, that'd be nice. Okay, uh, can we take 19, 20, and 21 together, or do we have to do it individually?
19 and 20.
19, 20 only.
You, you want to skip down to this?
No, 19, yes ma'am, I believe, uh, Fire Chief has, uh, an emergency here.
19 and 20.
Item 19, consideration in action for the City of Brownsville to enter into a contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish ambulance and emergency medical services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designated by Zone Number One on the official Fire Protection Service Zone Map of the, of the Cameron County Emergency Services District. Item number 20, consideration in action for the City of Brownsville to enter-
Just those two.
Just those two? To enter into contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish fighting, firefighting services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designated by Zone Number One on the official Fire Protecting, Protection Service Zone Map of the Cameron County Emergency Services District Number One.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, before you have contracts from, um, E S D to Cameron County offering $206,000, $282,000, which is about $46,000 more than last year, to provide ambulance service for the surrounding areas of, uh, Cameron County, and also a fire contract for $273,089.80 to provide fire service for that E S D district also, which is exactly $24,480 more than last year. And, um, we're recommending for approval.
Does that go into the fireman budget, or how?
That goes to the general fund, it's a total of over $70,000.
It approves. Comes back to you. Can we have a motion to, to approve? Motion by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner-
Second. On item 19 and 20.
Camarillo, okay, um, all in favor?
Are they both of them together?
Yes.
Well, did you read, you didn't read 21.
No, just 21.
No, just, 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 uh, 19 and 20.
19 and 20, okay, right now we're just doing 19 and 20. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
She needs to read-
Okay, item 21, please.
Item 21, consideration in action to award a term contract for software maintenance and technical support for public safety information system for the Brownsville Police Department.
Fire, fire.
Our Brownsville, for Fire Department.
City Mayor, City Commissioners, um, basically this is, uh, this is a, a renewal agreement for maintenance and technical, uh, support for a, this is for the Fire Department for software and technical support. Um, staff recommendation is, award a term contract for software maintenance and technical support for the public safety, uh, information system for the Brownsville Fire Department to spill man technologies, uh, in the amount of $18,090. Um, funding is in place, this contract, uh, it's, it's for one year. It will expire September 30th, 2008, and it will be, it will be subsequently, um, approved, I mean, not approved, but, um, renewed on a yearly basis.
I move to approve.
Can we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, last item.
Item 22, consideration in action to award a term contract for software, software maintenance and technical support for public safety information system for the Brownsville Police Department.
This is basically the same, uh, renewal agreement, but this is for the Police Department, so staff recommends, uh, awarding a term contract for software maintenance and technical support for the public safety information system for the Brownsville Police Department to spill man technologies in the amount of $83,645.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, can we have a motion adjourned?
Item 17.
We need to go back to item 16.
And 17.
17.
Which item, 16, 17?
Yes, sir.
Um, let's go back to 16, 17 then.
And 18.
And 18.
And 18. Uh, item 16.
How about 15, did we do 15?
Did it.
Yes, sir. That was, uh, Chris Patterson. Item 16, consideration in action on resolution number 2007-062 to authorize the submittal of a funding application to Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for fiscal year 2008 for the Pet Park Project.
Mayor Commissioners, we request, uh, tabling of this, uh, some of-
The pet shop was-
We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by-
Requesting required.
We have a second to table?
Table.
Uh, Commissioner Garcia, all in favor to table? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, motion carries unanimously, table, next item, please.
Item 17, consideration in action on resolution number 2007-063 supporting the Texas Border Radio Communication System Plan.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, uh, in, in brief, over the last several years, the state of Texas has been working to improve the public safety communication systems throughout the state. Uh, the state's in the process of finalizing the State Communications Interoperability Plan. What you see before you is an application that's been put together for the Public Safety Interoperable Communications Grant, uh, which is funding to be spent here along the Texas-Mexico border to improve communications for public safety entities, fire, police, emergency management, health. Uh, what we are asking for in the resolution before you is the support from the City of Brownsville for this application, you can see the application there in front of you.